It's six o'clock, it's 6:01. So we will open the October 1st, 2020 pre-meeting for the Murray City Planning Commission. With us right now, we have, I'm Phil Markham, the chairman tonight. I have Sue Wilson, Travis Nay, Scott Woodbury, Mary Patterson, and Lisa Milk. Or Lisa Milk on my screen, actually, so we can do that. And there is Ned Hacker. So we are all here. The gang is here. So Zach, with this evening's agenda, we are looking at a rather light agenda. So as we get into this, you know, we don't have any approval of minutes. Conflict of interest. Anybody have any concerns about that this evening?
No.
Finding a fact. There are two findings of fact from our last meeting. I thought they looked fine. I didn't have any issues with anything. Anyone have any comments?
Remind me how to pronounce that. A semi?
You know what? I think a thame.
A thame.
That's what I, you know what? My wife's Greek, so blame me if not. So, okay? That's what I would say, but I don't know. You know? I've lived in Utah all my life, so I have an excuse. Right, Lisa?
Yeah, I'm gonna put, write it down that way.
I haven't lived in Utah my life, and I don't know, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So getting into the meat of the agenda, we'll have, we have one conditional use permit. Robert Kazeer at 388 East Hillside Drive. He wants approval for an accessory dwelling unit. So Zach, will you be presenting this?
Yep, I'm doing both tonight. So I'll just go over it real quickly. So Robert Kazeer, this actually came forward as a report of concern. I think it was mentioned in there. He was operating a short-term rental out of his basement. And he has been working towards getting this resolved. And as part of that, he would like to operate an accessory dwelling unit. So he would be coming forward with, becoming compliant with that. It's, you know, half an acre site, give or take. A 794 square foot ADU, which is about 32%. And other than that, it's, there is that third bedroom, or you know, what looks like to be a third bedroom.
That's the, that's the one confusing thing.
Yeah, and he had told, what he tells me is that he's going to be, it's going to be locked off. So it sounds, I can only take what the applicant says as the notification. And he says it's not going to be used, except for his, I think granddaughter, I think is what it was. When she comes up for skiing and such.
Right.
Is it accessible to the ADU?
What they tell us.
I'm sorry?
Is it accessible through the ADU?
Yeah.
It looks like that's the only access.
Yep.
Yeah, it feels really wonky. Oh, hey, I know you're renting from me, but my granddaughter's here, so she gets to just be in your space as well.
Yeah, she can walk through the family room down there, back and forth, go upstairs and join us.
Share the bathroom, it's fine.
Hey Zach, I'm actually, it has its own bathroom. Like, I don't see the kitchen. Am I looking for the wrong one? I see one.
Yeah, see, and that was my thing too, is there's no kitchen.
It doesn't show it in there, but it's in the.
Family room?
It's in the family room area, yeah.
I'd feel better if we had a drawing of it.
Yeah, it's, I mean, are they just using like a Camp Chef stove or something?
No, he, this was, this was a remodel. They did remodel the whole downstairs, and a building permit was issued for it.
It's been inspected, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and it was, there was a second kitchen already in it. So when we approved the, when we approved the, the building permit, we didn't question it, so.
Okay. Well, as I said, other than that, it's very straightforward, and it's an ADU. If he agrees to all of the conditions, it looks fairly standard, unless anyone has, you know, anything else they want to bring up during the meeting, so.
Can I ask Zach a quick question? Zach, did they, there's a floor plan in here for the first floor as well, I believe. Did they remodel the first floor also?
Yeah. They like to, somebody, I don't know where it's been brought up, but it's been brought up that it was in the parade of homes recently, I guess. As like one of the first parade of homes, homes to be a remodel. So take that with what you will.
I agree with whatever I said, and I think it's gonna be straightforward because it fits all the requirements. But still, kind of, every time we have something that looks highly suspicious, but we just have to believe the owner, I always kind of, I don't know what to say.
Let me, let me just pose a question. Are you guys, so it doesn't really matter for this application, we're processing it as it is, but how do you guys feel about bedroom requirements on ADUs? Do you, do you like the two bedrooms? Would you care if there were three? Do you care if it's on rather size?
I think the square footage is most important.
I don't think the number of bedrooms is as important as the total square footage of the ADU, at least right now, without hearing arguments otherwise.
Yeah, that's what I said. The square footage is what I think matters, not the bedrooms.
Okay.
That'll go to the back.
I don't know, I think that the separation from the main dwelling unit is kind of a thing for me too. I don't care if there's three bedrooms, but I'd like to see delineation between the main dwelling and the ADU. Because with this one, we have that spare room that, you know, if they do use it for family, it kind of seems like it's making, muddying the water.
I agree with everybody said. I feel like maybe if before a decision is made, I appreciate more discussion, because my first thoughts are exactly what's been said. It's the square footage, it's the separation from the main dwelling. But then, on the other hand, if we have something that has five bedrooms and a thousand square foot, it's gonna end up being an apartment, kind of like next door. My triplex, the backside of the triplex has three different separate families living in that backside of the triplex. You know, if there's four rooms, it'll be, end up being four residents, and it won't be two adults. I don't know. Just more, it's more discussion possibly.
That's good to know.
So Zach, you said it's 32% of the overall square footage, so what's the maximum that it could be?
Forty percent.
Isn't it 40?
Forty, yeah, 40%.
So what happens when you add in the bedroom and the bathroom?
Goes over 40, I'm sure.
It definitely goes over 40. That's actually what kind of brought this on, is I was calculating, and I was like, wait a minute, this is way over, over, and it looks like a third bedroom. So I called them and asked them, and what he had told me is that it's for his granddaughter.
Yes, go ahead, Lisa.
If you look at the floor plan, and I'm just now looking at, for this, I've looked at it before, but just for this point. The stairs have a door to the closet here, then into the bathroom, and then into the spare bedroom. So might, if that is accurate, would it not, is it possible to ask them to close that door?
No.
The door is under the stairs.
Those stairs come from, those are the bottom of the stairs that you're looking at.
So there's a storage room in the bathroom that has.
The bathroom.
Hiding space underneath the stairwell.
Okay.
That's what it is.
There's no other access to that room. I mean, you know it's gonna be used.
Now this, this.
All we can do is what they agree to during, during the meeting tonight, you know.
It's probably just worth reminding them.
Yeah.
You know, as, and calling that out, and you know, certainly Zach can do it in the, in the presentation. But I think even when, when you, when we ask him, we can say, you know, it looks like there's a third room that's not, that's not walled off. You know, that would put you over the, you know, over it, and just get it on record. And then, like you said, Phil, then at that point, you just let it go.
Yeah.
But saying that's kind of pointless, it's paper tiger, because there is absolutely no way we can prove that they're using two or three bedrooms. There's just no way.
Midnight inspections.
Exactly. No knock code enforcement.
There you go. That would, that would end well, wouldn't it?
That's what people can hurt.
Goodness gracious. You're grounded, Scott.
I just missed you guys so much.
All right, well, I think, I think we've discussed that enough, you know, leading into the meeting and that. So let's go to our next one. Site plan review for Dutch Brothers Coffee at 5546 South 9th East.
Yeah, so this is a, this is a site and architectural review.
Well, I'll say it is.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's kind of hard, because it's the first in a long time that we've kind of brought forward. Where it's not conditional, this isn't allowed use. So it's really just reviewing the architecture and the site and the parking and all that, making sure it works. So it's tiny, it's 861 square feet, almost as big as that ADU. And it's largely going to be used, well, it's not largely, it is going to be used as a drive-through coffee shop. And it's in the same location as the AutoZone that you guys recently approved, and the EOS Fitness that is now open as well. So very, very run-of-the-mill. It's still, that site is still well overparked. I have no issues with parking. Their landscaping is straightforward. They redid it as part of EOS and AutoZone. This is really just a, just a kind of a wink and a nod, and we're done with it.
You know, the footprint of the building doesn't look like it's any wider than that landscaping strip that is there. And you're gonna have ingress and egress on both sides of the building. It's about as perfect as it can be.
I don't see any issues there, for sure. But I'm happy to answer any questions about it.
Okay, well, you know what?
I will say, we'll probably have an army of people, because they're from, the people that are bringing this forward, I think are used to a much more heavy-handed approach to development. So they're bringing in like all their designers and all their architects.
If we had any questions, all you had to do was look at all of the material submitted, and your question would be answered. That's, that's a lot of paperwork that was.
It was. Yeah, they gave a lot.
I mean, I, they've got a, they've got architectural drawings and engineering references to the entrance and exit sign.
Yeah.
It's pretty thorough.
They have everything.
Since we have a couple spare minutes, can I have a philosophical conversation with?
The floor is yours.
With the planners here? Okay, so here we are, we're taking a really poorly developed project in general, this piece of property, right? Forty years ago, we made a lot of material mistakes that we now recognize as material mistakes. We've overparked this site beyond anything that could ever have been in there, even when the Albertsons and, and all the stores were in there cranking full steam, it was always overparked. Second, we still don't have any policies in place that make the site be amenable, not only to automobiles, but to humans. And so walking up from, from 9th East, I can walk up to this safely. But if I'm internal in this site, I have to walk through a parking lot. I have to fight little old ladies going to Walgreens that aren't paying attention to where they're driving. We have this site, we have the Kmart site, we have the site that we just approved, the 7-Eleven. We've got, we've got ShopCo, we've got Toys R Us. We have these major sites where this has just been a 30, 40, 50-year mistake that we've made. And there's no policy in place that is trying to address that for future development and redevelopment. And these sites are ripe for redevelopment. We're seeing it right now. We're seeing these additional projects come in here, and there is nothing that is acknowledging the human being in these areas. And I think that as a policy, the city needs to come up with some way to actually be able to consider that. You know, Jared's heard me complain about trying to walk over to Chick-fil-A across from the hospital, and how you can't walk around in that site, you can't get up to Zupas, there's no sidewalks to Zupas. We need to be better than that. And this is where that opportunity comes in, and we're missing that opportunity again, which means we're gonna be another 20 or 30 years before we're gonna be presented with an opportunity to resolve that. So I really think the city needs to start considering how we can take these sites and come up with a better way to handle them from a pedestrian perspective, as well as an automobile perspective. And then I'll get off my Buck Sweeney soapbox.
Well, and if I could, if I could kind of address your soapbox, is it, is it okay to mention it, Jared, or should I not?
No, it's not, not yet, sorry.
Okay, okay, never mind.
You know, and I agree with Travis. I've been in other cities where they have painted walkways that are delineated for pedestrian traffic in parking lots like this. So if you're a pedestrian and you need to get from the sidewalk to the storefront, you've got a designated walkway that's safe, so that you're not dodging cars as so much. And why don't we, why don't we do that? Why don't we have like painted walkways and, or even like pavers or something that just kind of imitate a sidewalk? So that pedestrians have, have a safe place to walk.
Those are great points, Sue. And I would take it a step farther and have protected walkways. So you could put trees, you can put bushes, grass, maybe not grass, you gotta mow that, but protected, which means they're behind a curb.
Yeah, and I've seen those, where there's just like a real low curb on either side of the walkway, till, you know, so that pedestrians have a way to get in, you know, the shopping center or wherever they're going from the parking lot. I mean, even parking lots that are like store parking lots have walkways painted, so that you can get from your car to the, you know, the door, front doors of the store without getting mowed over in other cities. Like, I've noticed in California especially.
I guess my question for Travis is, do you propose going in, like, looking at each of those sites? Because my thinking is, so many of those things are going to be redeveloped, but are they gonna be redeveloped, like the Kmart site, into something completely different? And so.
I doubt it.
Does it take the manpower to look at the ShopCo, huge giant shopping area, and plan out, in the future, we would like walkways from here to here, even though, you know, it not be a shopping center anymore? Do you know what I'm saying? Like.
Yeah, but, but. Go ahead, Travis, sorry.
No, you're fine, Sue, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, the, the walkway would be dependent on the type of building proposed for the site. You know, if you're going to build a storefront, then you need to put in a walkway. If it's going to be apartments, then it would have a different application perhaps.
Right, now all of those things are getting redeveloped, right? Potentially. So are you just saying, as the application comes to get redeveloped, you look at interconnectivity of parking lots?
Yeah, and I think that you're, I think that it's gonna be exceptional to have someone that comes in, like the Kmart site, where they own that entire project, and they're able to master plan it. Someone owns ShopCo, right? Someone owns that property.
The Lindquist family.
Yeah, if they try to come in and put in additional pads, or they try to redevelop, at that point in time, you take the elements that they're trying to work with and try to incorporate that into the larger. It's great if you can just one and done, say, this is how you're gonna do your entire site, but I don't think that opportunity is going to always be there. I think they're gonna piecemeal off these sites.
That's what I'm saying.
When the opportunity comes up.
I think that, you know, Toys R Us is gonna piecemeal, be redeveloped. So how do you know what the interconnectivity, you know what I'm saying? Like, for that, for one thing, like it develops at a time, I agree, but I don't know, looking at a whole site.
I think it's challenging, and I don't think a lot of these sites have been redeveloped in the Salt Lake Valley. This is, this is a new thing that's coming to the forefront, and that we ought to consider it as it's coming to the forefront. And I don't know what the magic bullet is here, and there probably isn't one magic bullet, but I think it's something that we at least need to consider as we move forward into these type of projects.
Can I, can I tell you what the magic bullet is?
Yes, we're waiting.
It's, 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 it's something that we're working on right, right now. So Zach, what, and we shouldn't tell you, we can't really be any more specific yet, because we don't have the money and things lined up, but that is exactly what was on our minds. Because of the, Travis, you said those sites are ripe for redevelopment, and you don't know how right you really are. And some of them will get piecemealed, like you're talking about, guys. There'll, there'll be situations like this, where Dutch Brothers comes in and takes a spot in the front. But there are others that would surprise the heck out of you, where we already have a lot of interest in the raising of buildings and the complete redo of sites as, as these projects. And I, we can't talk about which ones they are and anything, but really, pretty soon in the coming year, probably even by the end of the year, you're gonna see some other things going on.
Jared, you sound like, you sound like a politician that's running for reelection right now.
I'm gonna refrain from making all the jokes I want to right now, because they're just, it's too soon.
You missed half the jokes, they've already been doing it, so feel free, do it.
Well, and then, do you guys, one other quick thing, and then we need to, we have a question philosophically we need to ask you, but we hear you about the pedestrian connection stuff, Travis and I agree. It's, it's a lost opportunity with Dutch Brothers coming in. If we had some kind of, if we had any, not even some kind of, if we had any kind of standards about site redevelopment, we could be imposing them, and it's a missed shot. And we should have been on it a year earlier than we are, maybe even two years, but we're on it now. We needed to ask you guys if we can wrap up the conversation, that part of it philosophically. We needed to ask you guys about your willingness to consider, or how willing you would be to consider, allowing people, public comments to come into your meetings through Zoom, like we're doing now, as opposed to just the emails. The emails would remain an option, but we want to get an idea if the commission would be comfortable allowing people to join the Zoom meeting and be recognized.
That would be wonderful as soon as my term ends. No, I think that's a good idea, Jared, in all seriousness. I, I would, if you can control it, I would welcome that.
Yeah, would they, would they come in, Jared, with a comment in the Zoom chat box?
They would, they would. That's a, that's a great question. We kind of anticipated, Melinda and I were talking about it earlier. We anticipate that, we're not sure exactly, but what we would anticipate is that the notices that go out to neighboring property owners, et cetera, would go out with a Zoom link. And you could, they could dial in and join the meeting by Zoom. And if they wanted to comment, when you open the public comment period, we would do our spiel, and we'd read any emails that we got, et cetera. And then during that public comment period, they would need to raise their hands and say, I wanna speak, or they could even do it at any point. We'll have somebody from staff, or somebody from IT, or someone monitoring those raised hands, and putting people in a queue to make their comments, be recognized unmuted to make their comments, and put back on mute again after they made their comments. So we would, yeah, they would, they would speak the way we're doing now. When they were speaking, they would be the, the big picture in the screen and tell you everything they thought about everything.
I think it's definitely worth trying. If it, if it goes off the rails, we can always revert back, but I definitely think it's worth trying. That's my opinion.
Okay.
Jared, my very first thought is, yes, it's wonderful to include the public, give them more opportunity to speak. My immediate second thought is, in our current debate style, will someone be able to control the mic?
We have the mute function. We'd, we'd need to use it. I think my thought about that is that it could really easily get out of control. So you'd save the three minutes, and then Sue, you've always kind of been our three-minute warning person a lot of times. At some point, you would chime in and say, hey, your three minutes are almost up. And Jared would go, you need to probably wrap it up here. And if they do, just like they do at the podium when we're live, not wrap it up, at some point, we're gonna have, somebody would very gently have to say, we really need you to wrap it up again. And then they still don't do it, and you'll say, we're gonna have to mute your microphone if you can't wrap this up.
Sure.
Do you have a Zoom expert, Jared? Do you have a Zoom expert?
Zach is the resident Zoom expert, but we, we, you know.
Well, and, and I would submit that we have several in our office, and we helped run the League of Cities and Towns meetings last week. And there are several different ways to run meetings as, you know, everybody, just as a big meeting like this, or a webinar, or a seminar. So you can, you can set it up, so you come in, and if, you know, so we're on the stage, but everybody else is behind the scenes, and they come in muted. And the only way they get to talk is with, with the moderator says, you can talk now.
That's a great, that's a great point, Ned, exactly. And well, it brings me up, it brings up one other thing that we needed to ask you. We're right now just meeting by Zoom, strictly by Zoom. Would you guys want to consider getting back together again, just the commission? So there is an anchor location, but public's not coming to it. How comfortable are you, or are you not with that as a concept? Travis is shaking his head.
I see a couple of negatives, and that's all it takes for me. If there's only, if there's any negatives, I don't, I don't wanna go there.
We stay Zoom.
It's not that I don't love you guys, but I'm trying to keep my house germ-free.
I know what you mean.
I mean, Phil and I are done in about six meetings, so, you know, whatever. It'd be nice to see you, you guys in person at some point, but who knows? Maybe we'll just show up to get our Jim Harland sweater and sweater vest and jacket. You know, I mean, I'm more comfortable going in, but again, I understand that, that it would make sense to have everybody there if everyone's comfortable, but Zoom is fine. I think we should allow the public to speak. You know, and we've all, I think many of us have done it to the point where you can moderate, you can only allow them to speak when, you know, when they, when they want, or when, when you want them to, so, yeah. supportive of whatever, so.
I agree.
We'll look into it then, you guys. I appreciate the, the conversation, thank you.
You know, and you could even say from the get-go, that at three minutes, your microphone will mute. You know, so that they know from the outset, they've got three minutes.
But then you need to have a, you need to have some sort of timer, and you could figure.
That's my job.
Well, you need to show it. I think you could actually have a timer in there.
Like counting down on this.
Yeah.
Yeah, you'd need to do that, rather than just, you know, but anyway, you guys can look into it, I'm supportive, so.
We'll do that.
Well, let's do this. If you don't mind, let's, let's just take a quick break before we reconvene for the regular meeting. And I'll, I'll see you guys in like three and a half minutes, okay?
Got a question for you, Jared and Zach.
Thank you. The meeting, this meeting is closed.
We didn't talk about it in the meeting, but both of the agenda items say there wasn't any public comment received when these went out, so was there any additional comment that you got from anybody?
I haven't seen any in the, I haven't seen any of this stuff.
Okay.
You have two, Zach?
Yeah.
Two comments, okay. So we can read those in, and then I'll, I'll monitor it during the, we can, it's easy enough to monitor the email while it's going on.
Perfect. Now, now we'll close the pre-meeting. Thank you. Meeting of the Murray City Planning and zoning commission. I'm Phil Markham, the chairman this evening. And with us this evening on the commission, we have Sue Wilson, Travis Nay, Lisa Milkovich, Scott Woodbury, Mary Patterson, and Ned Hacker. Staff helping us out tonight, we have Zach Smallwood, Jared Hall, and Melinda Greenwood is here. And also, hopefully keeping us on the straight and narrow from the attorney's office, Bryant Farnsworth is, is keeping an eye on us as well. So with that, I would like to start the meeting. And before we start our, our full agenda, I have an opening statement that I need to read pertaining to the type of meeting we're having this evening. So, as Chair of the Murray City Planning Commission, I, Phil Markham, have determined that due to the continued rise of COVID-19 case counts, holding an in-person meeting with an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those in attendance. Under these circumstances, House Bill 5002, an amendment to the Open and Public Meetings Act, allows for electronic meetings to be held without an anchor location, so long as the public has an opportunity to view the meeting and submit public comments. We're holding tonight's Planning Commission meeting via video conference, and the meeting is being livestreamed at www.murraycitylive.com. If you have a public comment to submit to the Planning Commission, please do so via email at planningcommission@murray.utah.gov. Thank you. Okay, and with that, before we dive into the meat of our agenda this evening, I would just like to go over a couple of ground rules that we adhere to. The way things will work this evening, we will go through the agenda as posted. And as we have an agenda item come up, we will have a presentation by a staff member. And once that staff member has made his presentation, the commission will have the opportunity to ask them questions. After that period, we will ask the applicant to come forward to add any additional information that they would like. And we can also ask questions of the applicant. At that point, we will open up the agenda item for public comment. And if you have public comment, as previously stated, we need to have you working on getting those submitted via email to the staff, so we can read those into the record. Any comments that were received prior to the meeting will be read into the public record as part of that agenda item. So with that, and, and, oh, and we do try to limit public comment to three minutes. I know that's difficult with, with written comments, but it hasn't proven to be much of a problem, so I'm quite confident that that will work just fine. With that, we'll get into our agenda, and the first three items are business items this evening. Number one, we do not have any minutes to approve this evening, so we will, we will skip item number one on the agenda, approval of minutes. Number two, conflict of interest. Do any members of the commission have a conflict of interest with any of the items on the agenda this evening?
No, no.
Okay.
No.
Hearing no positives, I'll take that as unanimous, I do not either. Number three, findings of fact from previous meetings. We have two. We have two findings of fact from our last meeting, Athame Aesthetics and Ace Plumbing and Drain Cleaning. Have each of the commission members had a chance to review those and do they have any questions or concerns about any of the, the items?
They look good.
Okay.
No concerns.
With that, I would entertain a motion to approve if, if you see fit.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the findings of fact for a conditional use permit approval for Corey Whitmer doing business as Athame Aesthetics for the operation of an aesthetics business on the property located at 825 East, 4800 South, Suite Number 230. I'd also like to make a motion to approve the findings of fact for a conditional use permit for Ace Plumbing and Drain Cleaning to allow a plumbing and drain cleaning business in the MG Zone.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Let's see here. I'm going to go with Ned on that. So I'll, I have a motion by Sue Wilson, a second by Ned Hacker to approve the finding of fact for Ace Plumbing and Drain Cleaning and for the Robert Kazir accessory dwelling unit as, as moved by Sue Wilson. Please, those in favor?
Can I stop you? Can I, can I stop you?
Please.
You just called out Mr. Kazir, who's our next item, as one of the items.
You know what? I'm sorry. I grabbed your, thank you, thank you. It's Ace Plumbing and Drain and Athame Aesthetics. Thank you very much. Travis. So with that, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. That's what happens when you're working from home in the basement with a makeshift desk. I grabbed the wrong piece of paper. Thank you, Travis. I appreciate it. All right. With that now, we will move to our conditional use permit on the agenda this evening. We have a conditional use permit from Robert Kazir at 388 East Hillside Drive for an accessory dwelling unit. And Zach Smallwood will present this to the commission this evening.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm just going to share my screen here. All right. Can you guys see everything?
Good. Looks good.
Okay, good. All right. So now let's get into there. Yes. So item number four, Robert Kazir is a request for an accessory dwelling unit at the property addressed 388 East Hillside Drive, located, here's an aerial photo of that as well as the zoning. It's in our 18 zone. Accessory dwelling units are allowed in all single family zones subject to a conditional use permit, or permit. So this property is approximately 0.47 acres in size. You can see here, actually, they have this private roadway that crosses the properties that allow rear access to the property. And that is where the entrance to the ADU is. You'll see in the photos here in a few minutes. The total size of the home is 2,474 square feet. The accessory dwelling unit is proposed at 794 square feet, which is approximately 32%. They are allowed to go up to 40%, up to a maximum of 1,000 square feet. So this does meet that condition for that requirement. So going forward, site plan again. Here you can see the proposed floor plan. The entrance is here at the top of your screen. You have the family room and the kitchen is located approximately here. He recently went through a remodel and it is, this remodel moved the kitchen over here. You can see the two bedrooms. One I do want to point out is I did talk to the homeowner, there is an access to a third bedroom here. The homeowner did state to me though, that this is going to be used for his granddaughter when she comes up for skiing and things like that and will not be accessible during, during any other time besides that, that, those times. This came about because of a code enforcement complaint of it being used as a short-term rental like Airbnb or VRBO. This is going to be remedying that. He's going through the process of, of actually turning this into a longer-term rental. He is, he does understand that short-term rentals are not allowed in the city and is going to comply with that. Couple of photos. This is from the Hillside Drive side of the property. This is the front area. These are the, this is the rear of the property. You can see it sinks pretty low, pretty quick. This is the entrance to the accessory dwelling unit here and zoomed in there a little bit more for you. So these would be able to be the off-street parking. They could meet it here as well. There's plenty of parking here. We require two additional stalls on top of the two that are required for a single-family dwelling. So you can see there's a two-car garage here. There could easily fit two there, but there is some in the back as well. So with that, we are recommending approval of this conditional use permit, subject to the 13 conditions on your screen. Are there any questions for me at this point?
Okay. Well, doesn't look like we have any right now, Zach. So with, with that, we'll, we'll ask, is the applicant present this evening?
He is. Hold on.
He is, probably muted. Any luck, Zach?
Hold on, just, there we go.
Did that work?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
There we go. There you are, Mr. Kazir. I appreciate you being here this evening. For the record, could you state your name and address for us this evening?
Robert E. Kazir, 388 Hillside Drive, Murray, Utah.
Thank you. Is, is there anything else you would like to add to the presentation made by staff concerning this agenda item?
No, I don't think so, Zach. I've done a pretty good job.
Okay. All right. With that, are there any questions from the commission for the applicant?
I don't think so. I have the packet here in front of me and I think I understand what's going on.
Okay, very good. All right. Well, not seeing any, any questions from our commission, I'll, I'll take the, the opportunity to open this agenda item up for public comment. And Zach, have we received any public comment prior to the meeting this evening?
Yes, we received two items. I'm going to stop sharing my screen for just a moment so I can get into the, into my file here. The first was from a Roger Ford. His three comments were, and are, one, he is not paying his fair, his fair share of property taxes, wait a year. Two, everyone in neighborhood should be in compliance. Many rentals in hood, rooms up and downstairs rentals. Three, Murray City needs to send SL County all information on remodel and tear-down permits so houses can be assessed properly for property tax. City has been deficit over the years. That is that one. And then I did receive a phone call on the 25th from a Craig Christensen. He was concerned that it was used as a vacation rental. He wants to be a good neighbor. He just wants everyone that uses the private lane to maintain it and be respectful to those that use it.
All right. We'll take another minute to allow any additional comments that may be coming in, an opportunity for those to come in. Any, any progress with additional comments, Zach?
I have not seen any additional comment.
Okay. With that, I'm going to take the liberty to close this public comment section at this time and bring this back up to the commission for discussion. The, the only thing I would like to, to say is, you know, the, the first public comment was, was directed more at the city rather than this particular application. And I'm sure that those comments have been recorded and, and taken to heart. With that, I'll open the floor up to anybody else that would like to say anything. All right. If, if there's no further discussion, yes, Lisa, please.
I'm a little bit surprised someone else hasn't said anything. I, I think this is a straightforward applicant and it all looks good. I, I just want to say to the applicant, I'm a little concerned about that third bedroom in the basement. I'm just, if it's used as part of the rental, it's out of compliance and I understand that you're going to close it, but it just seems a little odd that your granddaughter will walk through the renter's property into that room when she's visiting and all. Just a little uncomfortable.
Thank you, Lisa. And, and I will say that, that, that is a concern that each of us did share in the pre-meeting. And the, the responsibility of the commission is that we have to take the applicant at his word for the conditions that are attached to this application this evening. And there are 13 of them and they're very specific. And among those, it deals with that third bedroom, that that is not part of the accessory dwelling unit. And also that this will not be used for short-term rentals. So by, by the applicant committing to those conditions, we, you know, we have to take his word at that. And if, if there are problems that arise, that is up to the city enforcement to deal with that. Okay. If there are no further comments, I am open to a mission, to a, a motion on this agenda item.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve a conditional use permit to allow the construction or operation of an accessory dwelling unit at the property address 388 East Hillside Drive, subject to conditions one through 13.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ned. I have a motion by Scott Woodbury, a second by Ned Hacker, that the Murray City Planning Commission approve a conditional use permit to allow the construction and/or operation of an accessory dwelling unit at the property address 388 Hillside Drive, subject to conditions one through 13 as presented in the application this evening. Please call for a vote.
Mr. Woodbury?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Milkovich?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nay?
Yeah.
And Chairman Markham?
Yes. Passes unanimously. Good luck, Mr. Kazir, with your accessory dwelling unit and please be mindful of the conditions. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we will move to our agenda item number five, our site plan review. Dutch Brothers Coffee at 5546 South 900 East. It's a new drive-through coffee shop and Zach, you're the man once again.
I am again. All right. So like you had said, this is located at 5546 South 900 East. This is a site plan and architecture review for a new building in the CD Zone. And now, there we go. All right. As you are aware, this is the site. It's about 5550 South 9 East. This was the old Sports Authority. It is now EOS Fitness. And then a Autozone just recently is being constructed there as well. The proposal is for the, the Dutch Brothers Coffee to go in this location here. And that is within the CD Zone. In the CD Zone, we have to review any new buildings as, for site or the Planning Commission. I apologize, we don't. The site, the Planning Commission reviews any architecture and site plan improvements for new buildings. So this is a picture of the site plan as I showed. This was the location off 9 East. You can see the two here. This is where the Chevron is down below. Building is very small. It's 861 square feet. Stacking will be happening along here. They do have two stacking lanes to get people in and out. And then any overflow would spill out here into the parking area. Staff does not have any issues with, I apologize, would be removing, I believe it was 40 some odd stalls as a part of this application. We are still well overparked in this location, even with the removal of those stalls. Excuse me. This is the landscaping plan, just showing the existing landscaping to remain. You can see a trash enclosure has been proposed and is going to meet the standards laid out in, in our code. Floor plan for your consideration, as you can see, this is not used, this is not a, a site where people go in and sit inside the building. This is purely just a kitchen area so that they can get people in and out, but they do allow for a walk-up counter service. So you can see here down below and kind of in the bottom half of your screen. Provided a couple of pictures of the elevations for you. This is pretty standard, pretty typical for the Dutch Brothers brand. They've had a couple in the city, or not city, a couple in the valley that have gone up. And this matches almost exactly whatever the rest of them are doing. Couple of elevations here for you. Then I did take a picture of the existing site earlier today. As you can see, largely just open parking, not much going on there. Will be going, located here. Then I took a picture from the other side as well, showing that space. So we are recommending that staff approve the site and architectural review, subject to the three conditions below. Are there any questions for me at this time?
Okay. I don't see any hands, Zach. So very nice presentation. And I might add that it was a thorough application that they submitted as well. And I think that, that answered a lot of any potential questions that commission members might have. With that, I would like to ask if the applicant is, a representative of the applicant is present this evening?
Yes, I'm here. My name is Nick Wecker. I'm a senior planner with Barkhouse and Consult Engineers. And I'm a consultant on behalf of Dutch Bros. And so thank you for having us tonight. And we're really excited about this site and this being the first location within this particular community. So we're really excited to be here. Zach did a good job of introducing our project. I don't have a whole lot to add other than we prepared some elevations I showed as well that features, it is our standard prototype, but it's an aesthetically, visually aesthetically pleasing building that we've incorporated some additional modulation into the exterior walls to include a tower element that'll be oriented to the street. We have building wall articulation with a large canopy awning that extends over a separate walk-up window on the opposite side of the drive-through, should be noted as well. And so we'll have a canopy over the walk-up window that allow for customers that come to the site by foot. Like Zach said, there's no indoor dining or anything like that. So it's just either the walk-up or the drive-through window on the other side facing the street. Landscaping, Zach mentioned, existing landscaping, the fitness center will have their own landscape plan for the perimeter along 900 East. We are adding additional landscape within the interior of the site to kind of beautify the area, the parking lot area with five new trees and close to 100 new shrubs within the interior landscape areas, including a bio-retention pond on the south side. And so with that, Amy with Dutch Bros is also. Um, and so with that, uh, Amy with Dutch Bros is also with us today and, and has some, uh, words to share as well.
Excellent, please join us.
Thanks so much for having me. Um, I, I hope you can hear me okay. Everybody working from home, you've got something going on in the background usually, so, um, I just wanna say I, I have met some of you virtually, um, and I'm excited to share Dutch Bros with your community. It's a community that I've loved for a very long time, and specifically, I really, I really love Murray and being down there, um, in the heart. I feel like the heart of Holy City. Um, that's usually where I stay when I go. So I'm excited to share the largest private, really, uh, coffee company you've never heard of, and don't wanna say bros, but we are bros. And we are excited too, because we, uh, require each one of our operators to give 1% of their monthly sales in some form of charity to a local community. So we're really excited and hope to be busy enough to really make a difference in that community going forward for the next 30-plus years. And overall, we gave back to some form of charity last year, about $5 million. So we're really excited to be able to share our love with you and with your people. We don't just have coffee, that's our name, but we're more of a beverage place and more of a, we used to give out a lot of hugs. We, um, can't really do that during COVID, but, uh, we're giving virtual hugs and nice little messages on your drink, whatever you choose. But we do have other options, plenty, plenty of other options, and can't wait to share that with you. So if you have any questions about operations or something that I can help with, I would be more than happy to do so. So thank you.
Thank you. Um, any, any questions from commission members concerning the, uh, application?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
So this is either Nick or Amy for you. Um, there's a, excuse me, there's, you have the walk-up window and no inside dining. Have you given any thought to have any sort of, um, facility outside, um, perhaps between the structure and, and 900 East for a table or, or that sort of thing? Tables with umbrellas that people could walk up and, um, get a beverage and sit outside?
Yeah, hi, this is Nick Wecker again. Um, we do have connection to the street to, to allow walk-in traffic to our window, but we find most customers are, are on their way to somewhere, um, so, um, a lot of it's pass-by traffic coming to the site, but then also customers that are walk-up there on their, they're in-between, uh, destinations. Um, and so we don't, uh, have anything planned in particular for this site, uh, but we do have a large canopy area that provides some weather protection, uh, for people while they're ordering their drinks and, um, while they're on, on their way, uh, between destinations.
Would, would there be the possibility in the future of, of potentially adding something like that if it was, uh, you know, requested by enough patrons or there was enough interest?
We definitely added a few tables here and there before. We, you know, obviously don't wanna spur any kind of city code that we're not able to meet by doing so, any kind of occupancy load we couldn't, um, handle. But, um, yes, we, we love having people come and sit and hang out a little bit here and there, so we could, we can look into that for sure.
Thank you. Uh, and, and any other, uh, comments, uh, questions of the applicants? Okay, well, with that, I, I will, uh, I will open this agenda item up for public comment, and, um, Zach, have we received anything prior to the meeting this evening?
No, sir.
No. All right, well, we'll take, we'll take a short period of time to see if, uh, anyone can, uh, submit something that they would like to say, so we'll, we'll do that at this time. Any activities, Zach? All right, I will take the liberty of closing the public comment portion on this agenda item, and I will bring it back up to the commission, uh, for further discussion or a motion if anyone sees fit.
Mr. Chairman? Can I make a general comment?
Absolutely. Comment first, please.
I appreciate the way they're handling the queuing here, and I think it will be handled much better than what we're seeing across the street at Swig. So being able to keep all the cars internal to the site, I think is key to the success here, and, and I applaud them for doing that.
Uh, Travis, I think what you were saying is this appears to be polar opposite of the situation that is currently there. Is that, am I correct?
That is a fair statement.
Thank you very much.
I will second that, Mr. Chairman.
I am still open for a motion.
I'll make a motion, but first I'll say, I think this will be a, a good addition to the, to the neighborhood there. So I, I make motion, Mr. Chairman, that the planning commission approve the site and architectural review to allow the construction of a new building for drive-through coffee business on the property address 5546 South 900 East, subject to conditions 1 through 3.
Do I have a second?
To Chair, I'd like to second the motion.
Thank you, Lisa. I have a motion by Ned Hacker, a second by Lisa Malkovich, that the Murray Planning Commission approve the site and architectural review to allow the construction of a new building for a drive-through coffee business on the property address 5546 South 900 East, subject to conditions 1 through 3 as presented in the application this evening. Please call for a vote.
I think that was me, yes.
Sorry, am I, do I?
Now you're good, Zach.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Malkovich?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Nay?
Yes.
Commissioner Woodbury?
Yes.
And Chairman Markham?
Yes, and I'm very excited to have another place to, uh, to check out and to frequent. My daughter lives in that area, and I have friends in that area, and so it, uh, it will be, uh, a, a welcome addition to the, uh, community. So thank you for investing in Murray.
Thank you. We really appreciate your time.
All right, with that, that is the end of our agenda this evening. Um, it's a, a lovely, short agenda for the 1st of October. So, um, are there any, uh, any items that commission members wanna bring up for discussion? You know, just casual, or, or is there staff discussion that we need to hear about?
You know, I, I feel like I've already been a, a really important and intrinsic part of this particular planning commission meeting, so I won't go on.
You know what? By saying that, you're really leaving yourself open, because you didn't say a word, and we could all concur with that, and you would really be in a bad spot.
You did, you did great.
I have to make sure that I don't slip up and say something completely awful.
That's about what I'm good for these days, but, you know, no, we, we, I think we covered the, kind of, the things inadvertently, without really meaning to. We kinda covered the things we needed to in the, in the pre-meeting, so. Uh, we, we've got a lot of things coming your way that are a lot of fun, so we're really excited.
Well, you know what, Jared, that speaks to the quality of the people you have on the commission, I would think, that we can anticipate, uh, things that you, uh, you folks are working on, and we know of, or that, that, they're of great concern to all of us.
You know what? You have no idea how exactly true that really is. You guys are a stellar commission. I mean, I, I have a whole big speech planned for when you and, and Ned, or, sorry, when you and Scott have, have finished your, your terms, but you guys are really good.
I think I'm gonna.
I will miss it terribly when it's broken.
And I think I'm gonna push to extend terms, because I just don't want this commission to change.
You know what? Nine years is long enough.
No, it's not.
It's one year longer than any president of the United States should ever serve.
I fully support term limits.
Absolutely, Scott, thank you.
Thank you all so much, though, but really thanks. I don't think we have anything else. Zach, did you have anything that we needed to cover that we didn't?
No, I was just gonna say, I'm really excited for the next meeting for the design guidelines I've been working on since.
Forever.
Beginning of this year. So, yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm really excited to bring those forward to you guys and get your guys.
All right, well, I will drop by tomorrow with the signed, uh, uh, findings of fact and take care of the paperwork. And with that, I'm open for a motion to adjourn.
Wait, so one thing, do we know what's gonna go on the corner of, uh, 5407 West through Ivory Homes? Do we know what they wanna put there?
They're asking for RM15 zoning. Um, I'll, I'll tell you, can't, I mean, we, we can't control it, obviously, 'cause once it's zoned, it could be apartments or it could be whatever, but I'll tell you candidly that they'd like to do townhomes.
Okay. Town, townhomes?
That's gonna be an interesting agenda item that'll, uh, be on our next agenda, so that, yeah, I'm, I'm looking for it.
Is that where the old, uh, the old gas station is?
No, it's across the street. It's like a, I don't wanna say it's a goat farm. It's the, they're.
It's the goat farm.
It's a sheep farm. Sheep and goats and geese.
There you go. They were animals. I saw that they were animals. I don't, I don't know. But yeah, that, that's where it is.
All right, excellent. Well.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved. We are adjourned this evening. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Everyone.
Have a good evening.
Bye, everyone. Good job, Phil, as always.
Thanks, guys. Yes, great job.